An open session at 7:05 PM. And we are all here. Jen Benham is participating remotely tonight. And so next order of business is...
Ness is not here.
Ness is not here, yeah. So the approval of minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 25th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting of April 25th.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, minutes are approved. 2.2 is the approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 30th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 30th, which was attendance at town meeting.
I'll second. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, number three is questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed in the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Massachusetts general laws, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and, three, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So if we have anyone in the audience here that would like to make a comment, if you can come to the microphone, give your name and address. We also are live streaming the meeting tonight on Harbor Media. And Eliza, are you monitoring the comments? So if you would like to leave a comment there, we can, we'll address that for any of the agenda items as we go. So, okay. All right, I'm not seeing any comments.
Somebody in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, if you can come to the... Hi.
Hi.
Christina Farron, 5 Martin Scov lane. Can you guys hear me okay? I want to make a general comment about an issue that I spoke about maybe a couple months ago, the eighth grade trip, the overnight trip to DC. And I just wanted to kind of circle back to it. I had spoken out against having any sort of vaccine mandate on the trip, and I realized that the district doesn't have mandates about overnight trips, in particular, you know, about having the vaccination status, has to be fully vaccinated. So I realize that you guys might have put language in place just in terms of the policy for this trip, not necessarily policy for all the trips, but maybe just for this one. And I, the guidance from the CDC has changed, and I just want to say that I feel like it's really unfair to ask people to go out and get their kids boosted at this time with little notice. And I just want to speak out against the language around this trip being fully vaccinated by the CDC standards, because I think everyone who's going on it has had two vaccines, or maybe a medical exemption or religious exemption. I just don't think it's fair. So maybe you can address it or tell me, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to hear if you're going to be enforcing that, or if you could actually change the language around that.
Thanks. Thank you. That's not on the agenda for tonight, so we won't be addressing it. Number four is the superintendent's report. Dr. Mises.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items to report on. Just want to just let you know that our COVID numbers are spiking a little bit, and we noticed that last week, I've already heard early this week that our numbers are up. We do testing in schools, and I just want our families to know that if they need any tests, we have them available to families. If they did not sign up initially to get tests from the Department of Education, they can still do so. We distribute those every two weeks to schools. They get sent to one of our distribution areas, and then we get them out to schools for distribution. So if anyone needs any tests, they're available in schools. If you're not on the list to get them now, you can still sign up. Last school committee meeting, I did not announce that Amanda Donovan, who is the current interim at East Elementary, is going to be the assistant principal. Becky Casey is retiring at the close of the school year, and Amanda, who is now the interim, will assume the roles of assistant principal. And that will begin July 1st. And we have done a number of hiring in my time to try to prepare for the 2022-2023 school year, and I'd like to highlight our Human Resources Department for actually executing everything that we were able to get done. It's been a really hard push to try to get the quality of candidates that we had and actually get them appointed, which we're moving forward, and we're grateful for that. So right now, we have a full complement of administrators going into next school year. We think they're highly qualified, motivated, eager to be in Hingham, so we're excited about that. And this is more a personal note than it is anything other than appreciation for Eliza and for Carlos. I know these are your last meeting, and I want to thank you. I know I came into this school district, you didn't know much about me, I didn't know much about you, but you've made my time workable and doable under some difficult circumstances, and I appreciate both of you and the dedication that both of you have demonstrated to this community, focusing on children first. I've seen that, working with you day in and day out, and I really want to share my appreciation for everything. I didn't buy the plants and the, and the, that wasn't me, but I hope my words can rival the gifts you received tonight. And also, this morning, I had a Sustainable Budget Task Force reunion meeting, as we did that work prior to the budget, and we had another meeting, John and I, and a group of very, very able people looking at how this community can set forth the goals of the Sustainable Budget Task Force that were rolled out or discussed earlier this budget season. A fantastic group of people that have a great, a great deal of work ahead to actually get some of this stuff off the ground. So met this morning, just grateful to be part of that. And my days are numbered, but I think I'll maybe join one more meeting and see how that goes, but they might kick me out, but anyway. I, again, I think I have a couple meetings left, and I'm just grateful to be part of, part of this, and the school committee is a special group, so congratulations to you two.
Thank you.
Yep.
Number 5.1 is student communications. Nigel?
Yeah, so actually, not a whole lot of new stuff. For those of you who weren't there, a couple, on last Thursday, May 5th, a couple members of this committee met with us at the SAC, and we mostly just discussed logistical things relating to our elections and our sort of presence in the coming years and how we're going to go about establishing that. I don't really have any updates since then, so I'm just going to turn it back, actually.
Okay. Really appreciated that meeting, because I thought it was really productive.
Yes, very, very proud of it, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and I did check in with MAS C about the Student Advisory Council for the state, for the regional, and I have some information for you, so.
Oh, awesome, great. Yeah.
Can I just, um, yeah, go ahead. I just, thank you, Elijah, because I know this is your senior year, and this was a new position with the Student Advisory Committee to the school committee, so thank you so much for all you've done to help lead that group and to all the other four representatives on the group, because it's a lot for high school students to do, so we really appreciate it.
Everyone else who does it will be doing the role you've created the role.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, 5.2 is communications received by the superintendent. 5.3 is other communications. Has anyone else received anything? Michelle?
I have not, but I did want to ask Gary, under other communications, the COVID update dashboard, did, did you just mention that the cases are going up a little bit? Will that, will you start sending that out again?
It is, it's on the website.
Oh, it is on the website, okay.
Yeah.
It's just on the website.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Got it, okay, thank you.
I believe Heather put it up a while back that it was going to be on the website, updated on Fridays.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are you mentioning that I didn't read all my emails? I'm sorry, Gary.
No, 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 no. I just was looking at Heather to confirm, because I can't keep up with everything. I know Heather's been on it, so.
I am too.
And I appreciate her diligence in helping us to do that, and Sherry as well. She's on top of it, so.
Thank you.
Great, so now we're on to unfinished business. 6.1 is to discuss a memorandum of understanding between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department, and this is a second read, so we can vote on it tonight if we feel we want to. So as we talked about last time, this is an update to bring our MOU with the police department into compliance with Mass General Law, and it'll talk, it talks a lot about the relationship between the school department and the police department, the process for choosing NSRO, the professional development that goes into it, and the policy subcommittee worked with Chief Jones extensively to work through it, and basically what we're trying to do is memorialize how the program works in Hingham, and to bring it into, outline everything we need to outline under the law. So if everyone's had a chance to read it, if, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts or questions or anything.
I mean, mine only thought I had gone through it and compared it to the state sort of sample that they use, and this seems to be very much in line with that, and we are a bit past due on getting this done, since it should be done annually, and I, and the fact that it is done annually, I like, it's a sort of a living document now, and Dr. Adams can weigh in and have to start a relationship with Chief Jones, and I think that'll be great.
Great. Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Would you like to, Nigel?
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department as presented in our folder.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, next, 6.2 is to discuss a letter of agreement between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department regarding the HPD comfort animals on HPS property. This is also a second read, so we can vote on it tonight. And thank you, Gary and John, for including and for Officer Ford and everyone for sending us all the information on Opry, and it sounds like some really extensive training has gone on, and she's done really well, so that's great. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts after our last discussion.
I think just a couple things, and sorry, I'm, I think, John, I had a question for you, because you had sent over the Trident, looked like the sort of insurance, not insurance policy, but the overall, and I just, did it include, I'm just wondering, do we have to define comfort service therapy dog separately? Because I felt like that the Trident information was about therapy and service dogs, and I just didn't know if we need to clarify anything with that.
We really don't.
Not with the insurance company. That was just like, you know, ways to mitigate the risks, that's all. So, you know, so long as we undertake those efforts, we should be fine from an insurance perspective.
And this agreement specifically for comfort animals, it's not therapy support. That's covered under our animal policy.
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts or questions? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve, I'm sorry. I'll take a motion to approve the letter of agreement.
I want to make that motion.
The move that we approve a letter of agreement between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department regarding HPD comfort animals on HPS properties, property.
Second. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's approved, and thank you very much, Officer Ford and Chief Jones, for all of your work on this.
Yes. If I can, also, sorry, and Officer Ford, I just, again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you were, I can't remember if you were here at the last meeting, but I personally wanted to commend you, because I've heard lots of really great feedback of your outreach to the students, particularly some of the students who were a little concerned about the potential of having the comfort dog, so thank you so much for that, I really appreciate it, and I, I know you're going to keep doing it, and I've had the pleasure of finally meeting Opry in person, and yeah, I think it's going to be a great addition.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, 6.3 is to discuss the 2022-2023 school year calendar and act as appropriate. Dr. Mises?
Yes, we're looking tonight at approving...
The calendar, this was really the calendar two, or option B, that we looked at initially. The dates on the calendar proposed are, have been worked through, with the exception of the elementary conference dates. I think there was, the first date is some, what, in limbo, because we have to take a look at what's the best time to have conferences with teachers and parents. I think our teachers want to have a better understanding of when can we give feedback to parents during that first trimester. So we're going to work on that date, and since that date is formalized, we'll get it out to the elementary parents, but the calendar that is in the agenda tonight is good to go. The dates have been reviewed, and we feel very strongly that this is prepared to move forward for a vote tonight.
Do you want to have any questions?
I know parents are anxious about it, but can't read the calendar out loud to people along the meeting. Will it be posted on the website if we approve it?
We will get it up tomorrow.
Awesome.
I'll have Sherry work on that, and Heather can probably help, because...
There'll be a lot of people logging on tomorrow morning to get a look at it.
Well, it's either we, either we do that or they'll call our office, so I'd rather have them go to the website, so.
Okay, great. Maybe the first day?
Yeah. The Tuesday, the 6th of September, 2022, and then the last day, assuming no snow days, would be June 15th, 2023, and then with potentially multiple snow days, if you had, if you use all five, the last day would be Friday, June 23rd.
Yeah.
And finally add that is much, you know, 23rd isn't too bad, if you have the five. This year, we're, we were in a bind, and finishing school on a Monday is not optimum, right? So to come all the way back, we've had four days this year, which has been difficult, and we had a weather day, not, you know, we had a loss of power day early on in the year before the winter season, so, but we managed it, so I'm glad to see that it's in the, in the, in the mid twenties or early twenties of the month.
I guess I would just also add that the last day of school before winter break is December 23rd, it's a Friday, and it's a full day. The week of February vacation is the week of Monday, the 20th, and the week of April vacation is the week of Monday, the 17th. So, and that'll be on the website soon. And not Election Day? Excuse me?
Is Election Day not?
It's not.
Not at all?
We, like, on day, we will have school.
We will have school.
Hingham will have school.
Yep.
Gary?
Yes?
Does it mention the first, are we going to mention the first day of kindergarten, everybody?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Jen, yeah.
You did not.
Thursday, September 8th, will be the first day of kindergarten.
It's early on, it's not...
Yeah.
Delayed, as parents were concerned about.
Yes.
As delayed, yeah.
Carrie, do you have one question? Two, oh, two things on here. One is regarding, from Lauren DiValla, 98, Black Rock Drive, what is the kindergarten starting date?
That's Thursday, September 8th.
Okay. And then there's another question from Becky Lynch regarding the public comment, and when will this be addressed about the trip?
It's, we, I don't think we have any plans to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
We voted on it back in the fall.
Okay.
Anything else?
Just thank you from Wildern Nursery School.
Oh.
About the calendar.
Okay, 6.4 is a strategic plan update.
Yes, we are well on our way towards, we're probably close to halfway with the strategic...
I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Oh, please do.
Is he taking notes over here? See, I'm not going to, doesn't I? Okay, I will take a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented in the packet.
I will make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented this evening and in our packets.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, calendar's approved, and we'll be on the website tomorrow.
That's a relief.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, strategic plan, we have, we've had two out of five committee meetings, we have another meeting this Thursday, and for the following two Thursdays, we'll have a total of five meetings, and we will have a framework of the strategic plan by the end of this month, which is extremely encouraging. And the school committee will have a presentation of the strategic plan on June 6th, and that will be here at School Committee Live to give a idea of what the strategic plan document will have for benchmarks. Once the strategic plan is complete, it will then go to a desktop publisher for a publication document, but we will definitely have a good indication of what the benchmarks and framework is on June 6th. So that's exciting, and I think it's also exciting to know that we have such a capable and excited group of people that are working on it. Dr. Adams has been in participation, and I feel, I feel really good that we've, we've all worked together to come, come up with the beginning of a framework of where we're going for the next three years.
Okay, 7.1 is to discuss the Director of Business and Support Services contract with Ayesha Apang, and to act as appropriate. We've gone through the terms in executive session, and if there's any further discussion or somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll just say, we're really excited for Ayesha to join, rejoin the district. She was here working with John Ferris for four years, and she, she left to expand her career, not, and to get more experience with managing people and in the financial services district, and she's a Hingham resident, and she wanted to come back and support the schools, and we're very excited to have that knowledge, already be of the district, and being exposed to other experiences and, and coming back, and we'll have some transitional time with John, and John and the staff know her very well, and, which will be great for getting up and running very quickly. So we're really looking forward to having her rejoin us.
And I also wanted to thank Susan Diamato for her role in this, too, as, as Dr. Mises mentioned upfront, there was a lot of hiring to do this year, and this is just such a crucial position for the district, so we really appreciate all of your work on it.
And there were not a lot of candidates... Out there for any districts, and so we were really fortunate that she wanted to, to come back, so.
I'm calling you to board.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I think that's evident by the smile on John Ferris' face right now, who is not only grinning from ear to ear on his upcoming retirement, but also on the fact that he has a great replacement.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the Director of Business and Support Services with Ayesha Apang for a three-year agreement beginning June...
July 1st.
July 1st, 2022.
I will enthusiastically second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, the contract is approved, and welcome, Ayesha. 7.2 is to review school committee policies A through L to ensure the policies incorporate gender inclusivity. This is a first read. Jen Benham would ordinarily present this, but she's doing remote, so it'd be easier, I think, if I, if I do it. So this was, the policy subcommittee reviewed all of our policies to bring it, bring our, bring them in, into line with the town bylaw to, for gender inclusivity. Fortunately, for the work that we all did, and in particular Libby Lowiki, there weren't many that were not gender inclusive, so we went through and we found a few, they're in your packet. If you have any questions, you can ask me now or Jen later, but this is just a first read, and we can put it on the agenda next time. Any questions?
No.
Okay. 7.3 is to review policy KBE, which is the PTO booster relations. This is also a first read, and this came out of some, partially the work of the Wellness Subcommittee, partially the Office of Civil Rights had looked into a Title IX complaint that was filed, I think, 10 years ago, and had questions about the booster groups and making sure that they're, they're equal. And so we went through our policy and found that it wasn't necessarily specific enough as far as what, what documentation this booster groups needed to submit, so we just brought that into line, and so that's in your packet. Again, if I can answer questions, or Eliza can tonight, or...
Yeah, we'll have more later.
Yeah, yeah, or, you know, Jen, later, so. Next is 7.4 to appoint a school committee liaison to the Hingham Arts Alliance, and I guess what we should discuss is whether we want to do this tonight, given the fact that we're going to turn over the committee after the election on Saturday, but they had requested one, and I think we should support them, because they're, you know, they're doing really good work. It's sort, it's sort of like heath, you know, so I think it'd be a really good idea. I don't know if we want to do that now, or just turn it over, or we can do, we could do it at our next meeting on the 23rd.
We can split the hair, and I'm willing to go to any meetings before the next meeting we have, so there's someone from the school committee there, but understand a permanent committee person will be assigned at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Tim.
Yep.
I was going to offer.
Thanks, Carlos.
I did reach out to, just because I was thinking about the Hingham Arts Alliance and what they're doing, and they're sort of partnering with the schools, and I did reach out to Hingham Sports Partnership, because historically we haven't had a liaison with them, and just to see if they were interested, but they, they didn't think it was necessary, because we have such connectivity with them through some of the former school committee members, like Ray Estes, who are big parts of it, so they were good not to have him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, so we'll do that, and thank you, Tim. 7.5 is to declare items of surplus and authorize appropriate disposal action. John, is this you?
So there's a couple of initiatives that are going on. Actually, we have three items on the surplus list. One is the town is going to orchestrate an auction to dispose of surplus property for the town as well as the schools. They asked the schools if we wanted to participate, and the answer to that was yes. So, so we have a list of items that the maintenance department put together, it was on a spreadsheet, it's in the packet, to declare those items surplus, and those items will be provided to the town, and that Kathy Riley, who's the new procurement manager for the town, will undertake an auction at some time in the future. So what this is, is really a, it's a request to declare all of the items on those lists surplus, so that they can be sold at auction for whatever value, the highest value that Hingham can get, and that the funds would be directed to, deposited into the town fund balance, or the town general fund at the end of that. That's the first one. The second one is our Building 12, which we decommissioned. Building 12 used to be the building that Traces was in, but is no longer suitable for occupancy. We've always, in, for many years, we've had that as a storage facility. There's a lot of old furniture, there's old file cabinets, there's some old stainless steel from kitchen and whatnot, so what I wanted to do is, the second item is to declare the entire contents of that building surplus. We have gone in to remove any equipment that we needed once we decommissioned the building, so, and the thought there is to have that totally declared surplus, so that that can be sold off for salvage or for whatever, and, and the items can be disposed of, and that money would also be directed to the general fund of the town. All of these things that we're declaring surplus, the town's already, the townspeople, we've already paid for them, so that's where this money doesn't go to the school department, it goes back to the town, you know, from, for whatever value they may be received. And then the third item is to, is to declare surplus, the school committee, outgoing school committee member, Mr. Carlos De Silva, there's his six-year-old Chromebook, which has value to him, but we, and we've checked with Joey Andrews, and it's worth about $20 to have, it's scrap, it wouldn't be replaced, it wouldn't be used again anyhow, so to have that declared surplus and allow Carlos to provide a check of $20 payable to the town of Hingham, so that he can take his Chromebook with him when he departs from the school committee. So, and I have put, I have put language in the, in the box for those three votes, if you want to take them, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I jump in on this, Eliza?
I just made a note. My Chromebook is back at home, I need to return it.
Yeah, or... It's approved. Yeah.
John, do you have, and I know it's hard, because this is surplus, but just on your experience, whatnot, like a rough idea, what this kind of stuff, when you, when we do these motions, sort of, are we talking less than $1,000, more than $5,000?
You know, in this day and age? It's really hard to say, Michelle, and the reason is, is because, you know, when, when we sold a vehicle this year, last year, we thought it was going to be worth about $500, and went for $3,600. So things with motors on them, they may have significant value, so, you know, on that one, that could be, some of those things there could be significant, it could be a few thousand dollars, a couple thousand dollars, it could be five... It could be a few thousand dollars, a couple thousand dollars. It could be $500, okay? So, and I haven't viewed them myself, so I don't know what state they're in, but, you know, they're clearly things that we haven't used. They're of no value to the school system any longer, and they're just lying around taking up space. So I'm sure that whatever guess I would come up with would be significantly wrong, whether it be high or low. And Building 12, I'm hopeful that Building 12 will be disposed of at some value to Hingham, and that the cost of us getting the stuff out of there and disposed of will not be greater than the cost of the materials that are there.
Yeah.
So that's a wild card. I don't know that either, but there is some stainless steel, you know, depends on what kind of salvage we can get, and what company will really come in and pick it up and take it away for us. And of course- Yeah, you don't want to go in there anymore.
Yeah.
Didn't want to go in there then.
Yeah.
Well, there's a lot of stuff in there, and plus too, since we decommissioned, we're no longer using it. It hasn't been kept up, and there's, you know, there's mold grow in there. There's, it's not habitable. It's not suitable. It was, yeah.
It was a snake, too.
Sergeant, I know you already said before why it's going into the town general fund as opposed to into the school committee, to the school department fund balance. With those items, the, specifically the auctionable items, because those probably have the most value, were those purchased by the town originally?
Sure.
Okay, they were not purchased in schools?
Well-
I know it's-
When the school gets an appropriation, Tim, right, so the school, it's coming from the town's people.
Okay.
So they give it to the school. The school committee has discretion over where the money gets spent.
Right.
Still the town's money, so the school committee spends it, and then, you know, now they become antiquated, and we replace them, but it's really the still the taxpayers. They own it.
Right.
So when we sell it, we give it back to the taxpayer as opposed to taking it to the school.
Okay. Is that, that's the general policy that every, the-
Yeah.
Okay.
Textbooks, same thing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions?
That's why we have to go through the process of declaring everything surplus by the school committee.
Okay. I'll take a motion. Or three motions. I'll make the motion. There's all three of them. If someone else wants to, since John was kind enough to break them out. Motion one, to declare surplus. All items on the attached list marked Maintenance Surplus, May 2nd, 2022. Do I need to read this whole thing, do we think?
Yeah.
Okay. The items are antiquated, not operational, or no longer serve a purpose for the Hingham School Committee or Hingham Public Schools. All surplus items may be sold at auction by the town to the highest bidder, and all monies collected be deposited into the town's general fund, and to further authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to approve disposal of any unsold items at the least cost to the Town of Hingham.
Awesome.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain. Is that, is that the, all three of them?
Nope, I only do them through one at a time.
Oh, so that one I'm okay.
All right. That's fine. Okay.
All right. Motion to declare all items currently stored in the decommissioned Building 12. Such items include classroom and office furniture and fixtures, file cabinets, and non-working equipment, and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to approve disposal of any and all items for salvage value or at the least cost to Town of Hingham. Any funds received for such disposal may be used to offset disposal costs or otherwise be deposited into the town's general fund.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jen, are you and I, you're muted.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. And item number three, a motion to declare surplus, a six-year-old Chromebook currently issued to outgoing school committee member Carlos A. F. De Silva, and to allow such Chromebook to be purchased by Mr. De Silva at the current value as determined by HBS Technology Director Joe Andrews.
And that was $20.
And that was $20.
Awesome.
Thank you.
He didn't want to charge us $20.
It wasn't, but, but he had the say. He feels bad, but he placed $20 on it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Aye.
And Carlos abstains. Okay, thank you. Item 7.6 is to appoint Dr. Margaret Adams to the Board of Directors of the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the 2022-2023 school year. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes. Currently, I am on the board of the collaborative. I'll have my last meeting the first Friday in June, and Dr. Adams will take over in July. And you're a voting member, since we do send students there. And it's really good information to get a handle on the challenges that the collaborative has, and how districts can partner together to actually help solve some of their issues. So it's, I've enjoyed my time on the board, and I think Dr. Adams will find its value and get a chance to meet all the other superintendents in the area. Yeah.
Just can I ask why we're doing this now instead of a month ago?
No. She, well, she's a voting member, and-
Does she want to go to the June meeting?
I think, I think by statute, they, you, there's a window of time that they should be recommended and voted in, and I think we're within that window. So, yeah.
Do you want to clarify? You will be at the last 21, 22.
Yes, and I'm-
Dr. Adams will begin.
Yes, and if she can't come with me to the last, that last meeting, I would, I'll talk to her on Thursday, see if she can make it, just to kind of sense how the year closes. But if she can make it, that'd be great. If she can't, then she'll jump right in in July.
Does that take away your votes from the final meeting? Okay.
No, because this is as of July 1.
Okay, perfect.
Do a motion. Yep. I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Margaret Adams to the Board of Directors of South Shore Educational Collaborative for the 2022-2023 school year.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jen was an a too. 7.7 is to hold a public hearing to consider a resolution withdrawing from the participation in the state's school choice program for 2022 to 2023, and to act as appropriate. Talk about that.
Yeah, the school choice program is a model that was instituted back in 1991 in its pursuit to match general law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, and it allows school districts to admit students from other communities to come to school in their district. And Hingham has not participated in this. I think it's an enrollment concern, and when you take school choice students, you keep them until they graduate, so they can come in in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and they're in the district for the duration. One of the drawbacks, when you look at school choice, is there's not a dollar-to-dollar value of the child. It's a reduced, it's probably about half of a per pupil expenditure of what it costs in that district. It comes, that per pupil comes from the sending district to the new district. This is popular on Cape Cod, where school districts on the Cape are struggling for enrollment. It's not all that popular in some of these other school districts that have stable populations. So Hingham has not participated in the past, and, but it is, it's been around since 91, and I do not believe that there's been a level of interest in actually making it happen here in Hingham in the past.
There's a number of base issues that are going to be addressed, too, so that makes sense. Does anyone have any comments or question, Carlos?
Do we need a motion to withdraw ourselves?
Yep.
Okay.
Comments there from anyone?
Harvey Lynch, 3 West Moreland Road. I just have a question in general. It's just a question, because I'm still trying to figure out everything that you guys do, and with this, I'm just curious of, like, if we're trying to make this more of an equitable town, why wouldn't we, I don't know. I'm just, this is a question. Why wouldn't you look into that? I'm just curious.
Up for school choice. Anyone can apply, and we don't have the seats. So, and it's not necessarily an equity issue or a diversity issue. It could be-
Again, I don't know much about that.
Cohesive people could school choice in here. So that, it's not addressing that part of students. It's, I know, we had interviewed someone once who came from Avon, and Avon is a town, I believe, I believe that was, that they didn't have a lot of kids in their community, and so they wanted to draw students in to, because they had a lot of seats available. And then those surrounding towns in Avon, you know, they were, those parents were looking for a better program, and so that was desirable for Avon to attract students and for parents to want a good program. We just don't have the seats.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, 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 but, I mean, it's a relevant question, but that's not a reason, that's, it's other reasons of-
No, I could add a little bit, but- I'm pretty familiar with it. The tuition is about $5,000 per student, so when a child comes from another community, that community would pay Hingham $5,000. That's for the year. Parents have to transport, so it would be up to the parent to arrange transportation. They can't, they're not, they're not technically allowed to ride on our school buses unless they were to transport them to a bus stop within the town. So there's a lot of investment for a family to want to do this. So, and it's the application process. So it's almost like a lottery. So names go in, and they get, they get pulled out. So it's really a completely random act, and what you pull out are the students that are coming. And it's, I'm very familiar with it, and it, you know, one of the, one of the issues that my hometown deals with this, they instituted it about four years, five years ago, and one of the issues that they're struggling with now is all the, all the top-tier athletes are coming from other communities, and it's taking, you know, there's a big strife between, you know, the communities that are bringing kids into the, to the school district, and the kids that are trying to make the team that actually live in the community. So what turned out to be a really great idea to help raise some money, turned out to be, there was some difficulty within the community of, you know, we live here, but yet our kids can't be on that same playing field, for lack of a better phrase.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's complicated.
I mean, we're so fortunate to have such great schools, and it's like to be able to open them up to other communities, but then I heard all those answers. Yeah, yeah. No, it's great.
All right, 7.8. Do we need to- Oh, sorry, yes.
Just to Tim's point, I don't think it's to withdraw, because we're not, Hingham isn't part of it. I think it's to not participate.
So I think, I think it is to withdraw.
Is it?
Yeah, just looking at the document that-
Okay.
Somebody put in the packet. We're assumed to be part of it unless we disclose.
There you go. That's, I would just, right when you said that, I was thinking that. Yep.
Yeah.
Done it before, but I don't remember the process.
Yeah. I'll take a motion.
I'll move to withdraw from the school choice program for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're withdrawn, and 7.8 is to hear a report from the Wellness Subcommittee on recommendations from the Athletic Department Self-Study and Extracurricular Equity Review. Liza, take this.
So the Wellness Subcommittee, I just want to pull up our memo, too. This is the first year for this committee, and I have, I sent a memo covering this and a summary of our report. We had five goals for the Wellness Subcommittee, and we pretty much accomplished our goals. One was to establish a district wellness committee, which Suzanne Venus is at the head of as the Executive Director of Student Services, and that committee has been established and will be establishing its goals for the next academic year. That's a state requirement that we're now finally fulfilling. We had to make recommendations regarding gender-neutral terms in keeping with the town bylaw change, and you heard the policy updates that were done. And then also, we know, as the school improvement plans, we're beginning to address that process as well. Our third goal was to identify the social-emotional status of students across the district, and we actually, we did that prior to the budget. We got some reports from the counselors that helped us in forming the plans for the fiscal year '23 budget for additional social-emotional needs of our students, and for us to really understand what the students were going through. So that turned out to be a very helpful exercise for us. Our fourth goal was to work with the athletic director to fulfill the next steps of a department self-study that he had presented to the school committee, to analyze the budget, programming, Title IX regulations, to address equity. And then we also were looking at to evaluate the structure of our current athletic, artistic, and extracurricular booster groups, and look at options for equity and try and have full support of all Hingham sports and extracurricular activities. And from that goal, we had sent out the letter to all the booster groups, PTOs, Hingham Music Parents Association, other groups, to get a sense of where they are with their financial reporting. And so Goals Four and Five was the majority of our work for the year, and I will summarize some of our recommendations. We did not make actual recommendations on equity, because we recognized that there's still a lot of information that we're seeking, but we have recommendations on continuing to move this forward. And we also recognize that this will be a combined effort of school committee, administration. There's a lot of respective roles to play in gathering all of this information. This is not just the school committee doing this work, but it's everyone on their respective responsibilities contributing to this. So, so we did work closely with the athletic director to look at the self-study. We also heard from parents and students. We surveyed all the supporter and booster groups to get a sense of their activities, what their finances were. We did have some groups who did not report financial information, which helped inform some of our thinking as well, the fact that they weren't reporting. We looked at some of the responses from the strategic planning process and the forums. We also looked at some national and state amateur sports trends, and then also Kerry had mentioned there was an Office of Civil Rights Title IX review of the district, which we looked at that as well, and that helped inform some of our work. So we also considered that in the past year, there have been several Massachusetts school districts, athletic departments, who've experienced issues with bullying, assaults, use of anti-Semitic language, abusive coaches, and other harmful behavior, and there have also been reports of suicide among high-performing student athletes, more notable at the college level, but that's been multiplying. And actually, on Sunday's Boston Globe, the sports, Tara Sullivan wrote a column in the sports section about this issue. It's a, it's a growing challenge. And we know Generation Z has experienced a high level of social-emotional challenges even prior to the pandemic, let alone what the pandemic brought. So we all have a responsibility of supporting all of our students and also our athletes. So at the same time, we recognize all of the achievements that our athletes have, you know, outstanding achievements in athletics, and we applaud them and the coaches. But we also noticed that while participation remains high, there are many students who stopped playing competitive sports in our school and are looking for other alternative activities and- and are looking for other alternative activities and fitness opportunities during their high school career. So we do, our subcommittee believes that we can do better in providing a balanced menu of extracurricular programs to meet the variety of needs. So I'm not going to go into all the details of the report. But the report covers recommendations of updating the athletic department goals and missions and, you know, based on the self-study work that was done. And also looking at the mission statement of the athletic department to revise it and focus on creating a fun, positive learning environment to emphasize physical, social, and emotional fitness, teamwork, sportsmanship, the grid of competition, fulfillment of goals through practicing and achieving, communication that achieves success, and respect for others. That Hingham Athletics to be about positive relationships made during high school and not only about winning. Then next, we recommend that the athletics website and communications get more focused, that all athletic department information should be accessible through the Hingham Public Schools athletics website. There are various social media and Blogspot page and even preseason meeting PowerPoint presentations, but they're not all accessible on the website. And so that if everything's accessible in one place, that further communication and transparency will help with people understanding what's happening. There's four policy recommendations that we're passing on to the policy subcommittee to review. Two are related to policy JJIB of interscholastic athletics. One is to establish a policy regarding eighth grade participation in high school sports. We've had a couple of teams that we've had a decline in participation, and eighth graders have been invited to participate. But we're making the recommendation that eighth graders only be allowed to participate on the first year or junior varsity team and not on the varsity team, that the varsity team should be kept for high school students. Then also, under that same interscholastic athletics policy, that we're recommending that if there is an MIAA waiver requested, that the school committee should approve that prior to the waiver being submitted. And the reason for this is the policy states that participation in interscholastic athletics will be subject to approval by the committee and will be in accordance with regulations and recommendations of the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. So in essence, a waiver is an exception to following those rules. And so we feel that, and that we heard from some others in the community that this had been done in the past, that a waiver had been presented to the school committee for approval. So we feel that that would be appropriate. Then we also recognize in policy IJOA for field trips. There is an exception for, in this policy that says all out-of-state or extended overnight trips and excursions, except those required for student participation in tournament competition or contests, must have advanced approval of the committee. And we, in our discussions, we questioned this exemption and wanted to have a better definition of what contest and competition meant. We've noted that some boys booster groups have funded out-of-state trips and the corresponding girls program, and then other teams have not had similar opportunities. And we also noted that other extracurricular groups could have competitions out of state, such as Quiz Bowl team has gone to Washington DC in the past. And so because they're going out of state, it's also, you know, these are our students going out of state. The school committee should be aware of this. So we're not opposed to the groups doing these things. But especially with the sports, we want to make sure that meets Title IX obligations that if one group is doing it, that others have that same opportunity. And then also, just traveling out of state, we feel it's appropriate.
And Mass General gives the school committee the authority, requires the school committee to approve overnight and late-night field trips as well.
Yeah.
There is an exception for tournaments and competitions in this general law.
There is, and that's why we just were saying we wanted to sort of get a better definition of what.
Yeah.
Exactly defines.
Yeah, what does that really mean?
Yep.
Or also then, you know, can we approve going at the beginning of the tournament? We know there's an opportunity, there's a chance they're going to go, should the school committee be aware of that? But it is, we're saying that needs more research. We're not making a recommendation. Then as referenced earlier in the discussion for the policy KBE with relations with parent and booster organizations, this is about reporting financial information. And we recognize we had, the school committee had updated this policy based on Mass General policies, the template. And it included that any group should be registered as a 501(c)(3) organization. And while we recognize that is an ultimate goal, we recognize it's, it's not necessarily feasible the way we're set up right now. And so we, and also the information we received from many of the groups. There are many groups who are very well organized with their finances, and they're a very small group, but they happen to not be a 501(c)(3). There were others who were not so organized and could use some help in, in being organized. And then there were some, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. So we felt that the policy could be updated to provide some steps on how to, some more details of how to report the financial information and also to have the business office involved with collecting the information as opposed to the athletic director, so that there's a very streamlined process and a very clear process on how the information is collected. Once we, and I'd say we got reports from about 70% of the groups. And so we could begin to, and, you know, I, I gave you all the links to the information. We could begin to make some assessments of the equity of how we're, how funds are being supported in the town. But there are some key groups who did not report. And so we can't come back with a full recommendation of, or even a full statement of the, the status of the booster group's support of Title IX. But that, so that's something still to be worked on. We also made some recommendations about coaches that we need to streamline some of the HR procedures for coaches, that reinforcing that they are one-year seasonal appointments only, updating their job descriptions, ensuring compliance with HR policies. Also, we looked at the evaluation process, and the athletic director does have an evaluation process right now. But it mentioned some feedback or some information that we felt that only student feedback could really provide that information. So we do have some recommendations about student feedback. Also, we noted for coaches that there isn't a clear process in place for coaches to request equipment and program changes and that some booster parents were going to Hingham Sports Partnership to ask for equipment. And so that process needs to be clarified. I think that's a communication and a transparency issue. And then we recommended updating, updating a coach's handbook so that everyone's clear about what the intent is. For student athlete feedback, this was something that was brought up in the self-study. And we found a form, a coach's evaluation form, that a member of the community brought to our attention. And we created a draft form that could be anonymous, or a student could put their name on it. And we also recommended that the incident reporting form that is now on the website is, currently, it's related to focusing on discrimination or hate, and we felt that it should cover any athletic incident, not just those two subjects. Because there could be an issue of a fan and a spectator could bring something up, or there could be something we mentioned, like another, there could be stealing from equipment bags or an issue that a coach just doesn't recognize something, and a student would want to bring that to the attention. So we felt that that form should be expanded. There, the Title IX compliance has a lengthy list of data that should be collected and budget. And so I'm not going to go through all of it. We're recommending that that data be finally put in place. It'd be a big job to collect it the first time, but once it's there, it's a matter of updating it each year. And so we do recommend also that a dashboard be created so that it's easily found, very transparent, and can just be simply updated once a year. Booster programs are required under the Title IX regulations to report their finances. So that's going to be an ongoing big project that may take some time to do. But also, the student athletic handbook should be updated. And a couple of the things that we're recommending adding to the student athletic handbook is, one, an explanation of specialized equipment and uniforms is provided by Hingham Public Schools boosters and individuals. And it's something that we've noted from team to team and sport to sport that the students don't understand and parents don't understand of, you know, why does one team get backpacks and the others don't? Why does dance team have to provide their own uniforms? Football, you can provide your own helmet or not. Swimsuits, lacrosse, there's all different things. And we felt that if this was explained in detail in a handbook in one place, then everyone would just understand who's responsible for what. And there are certain equipment that it's considered personal equipment, and the individual student can provide themselves and in some cases, need to provide themselves to perform their sport. The other thing is that to explain clearly the unique requirements per team, there's a lot of questions about why don't we support the rowing team completely? The sail, sailing team, they have, provide their own boats and sails and, you know, we just approve the extra dock for them. The ski team provides their own transportation. You know, what's the difference with rugby? So there are some nuances with different teams, and we feel that that should be explained, the history explained, and a clear explanation, just so at least it's in one place and people will understand it. And then we, we are recommending the district consider retaining a consultant for compliance to help with this review and assist in creating these operating procedures and getting this data collected because we do recognize it's a big job and it, but it could be a one-time effort of getting going. And so if we hired a one-time, couple months, getting somebody in who has experience with it. And also potentially, the new data analysis position could help because the athletic department does its registration through Aspen X2. And so if we put the right codes in place, that could help as well. So the school committee has the detail on this. It's, was sent to all of the administrators who have a role in this. I haven't heard from anyone.
I don't think we missed it. Everybody had a little piece in it.
Yeah. But I also want to thank, well, Michelle and Ness were on the committees, so thank them for their work. We met six times. And I really want to thank Kevin Quilty and Ray Estes publicly. They came to, if not both of them, one of them were at every one of our meetings. And they, they contributed. And we had, they contributed by providing us information, but also asking us questions and us explaining our point of view. And we had a very collaborative conversation, and we both, on both sides, were understanding each other better. And so they, but the two of them in particular contributed to us getting up to speed in our thinking. And Jim Quattramoni did, I met with him several times, and he contributed to this, too, and was interested in, in making the athletic department better. So this, you know, I think this will help moving forward. And hopefully, with our fine arts director coming on, give some template to them of what the possibilities of how those programs can be communicated to the community as well. So that was my swan song.
Yeah. Yeah, I would be remiss if I did not share when Liza's being very generous when she was using the words "we" and "us." Liza did the lion's share of a lot of this data collection and benchmarking and sort of spearheaded this. This was a new committee this year. And I think there was some, there was a little angst, I think, in the community sometimes that we're, and maybe even in administration, is this a little overstepping? Is this a little too deep into it? But, but I think what we really came out with, I was sort of joking, that we left no group untouched, right? It worked for administration to do, policy to do, I think, every group to do. But I think it just showed that athletics are such a big part of the offerings in this district and such a big participation rate that I think this was really necessary work. And I think we heard from a lot of students and a lot of parents over the years about their experiences in this. And we've seen what's happened in other communities when people aren't paying attention to athletics. So I think this was, this is really good work to get done and a lot of really great recommendations that came out of it. And so thank you, Liza, for guiding us through it and for, for those in the community who helped give us the data that we needed to, to get this done. So it was good stuff.
Absolutely. It's a, it's a great blueprint moving forward. So thank you. I'll just echo Michelle and thank you, Ness, too, for your work on it. It's, yeah, it's a great document to work from. And I mean, hopefully, we will get to a point where it's not the school committee collecting all of this data. Like, we want to get it. So it's, you know, part of the business, and that's kind of the expectation, just for, for the group's protections as well. You know, it's, it's not, you know, not, not just being nosey.
Yeah, no, exactly. And I don't think it'll be that long before that, because especially with Dr. Venice taking over the district's wellness committee and forming that group. And then, you know, Coach Q taking on some of this stuff. Ayesha can deal with some of the budget things. So I think, I think we're in a good, good space.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions from the committee?
What do you think, Elijah?
Yeah, Elijah, what do you?
Elijah, what do you think? Good stuff? Sorry, no, no.
I guess I don't have a specific addition. I mean, that all, that all is clearly incredibly well researched and prepared. And if any part of it requires my help, it sounds like it's kind of already there.
It's going to be horrible.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
And Tim, I just want to, you're going to write up this part of the minutes, right?
Meticulous notes.
I can send you. No, I know, I'm just kidding. That might be helpful.
I was reading it up.
Sorry, go ahead.
You know, yeah, not one to hold back from questions. Sparby Lynch, three Westmoreland, I just had a question. It sounds like you've done a lot of work on this. And I think our athletics department is obviously extremely important for our kids socially, emotionally. I'm just curious, just because I think it's important to understand all aspects of it. How many cases this year have we had for Title IX in the classroom in or in on the buses or in it?
Oh, it's not like sexual assault Title IX issues. It's the. Oh, it's not like sexual assault Title IX issues. It's the equity between male and female sports of rosters, money assigned to it. So, that's all part of the broad Title IX. And I will say, our rosters are compliant and, and that's something that's been tracked. And we have same number of participation, like numbers of team members, male and female. What we were delving into more was the funding from the booster groups because we know that that's, we just know that's not equitable. And, and we also, under the, so the Office of Civil Rights had a review of Hingham 10 years ago, and then they came back for a 10-year review. And so, they were looking for some information. And in particular, they were looking for funding information on the booster groups. And we don't have that in place. And so, we...
Yeah, just to back up here, Title IX, if there's not equitable funding between boys' sports and girls' sports, it doesn't matter where it comes from, whether it's from the school district or our parents raise it. It's all, it has to be equitable either way. So, and the district's on the hook for keeping track of that. And if we don't, we could get in trouble.
I just wanted to make it clear if I might have any sub Title IX.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, yes.
I'm glad you did.
I think that would become confidential. Anyway, but we also, I mean, fortunately, we haven't had the issues that the other towns, North Shore, have experienced. And we don't want to, I guess, and some that are south of us, too. And that's also part of this effort of making sure that we don't have those issues. So...
And thank you for asking the question. If you heard it that way, then...
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Well, thank you again for, for the report. Again, a great blueprint moving forward. 7.9 is to...
No, it's probably best that I don't. No, I was just gonna, you know, it's great that you went through this, tried to clarify this, because there is a guide for the district to be extremely proactive on, you know, things can go wrong very quickly. And I think by having this in place, it's going to, it's going to help that. The problem that you have is when you start looking into these things, everyone thinks, well, why are you looking into it? It's not because of anything anyone's doing. It's because we have compliance. And that's all it is. And that's the biggest concern I've had, even with some of the groups, like, well, what do they, what do they want to know? No, it's not what they want to know. It's just, we're trying to make sure that we don't get in trouble, or you don't get in trouble as an organization that supports the district. So, I think that's really important for the groups to hear, that it's not, we're not, the spotlight isn't on you. It's just, we're trying to make sure that we have guidance so all these groups kind of just fit that mold so that they stay out of trouble automatically by following the guidance. And that's why it's so important.
And from a student-centered standpoint, we've heard that the students question, why, why do certain groups get certain things and others don't? And so, we want to make sure that we can answer those questions and maybe even it out a little bit. And maybe it's, everybody's boat rises if, if we work together a little better. So, that, you know, we, we heard from students, too, that they had concerns and so, we're responding to them. We have one question. Karen Carley, does this apply to PTO or just booster groups? It will apply to PTO. And the PTOs were very cooperative of providing all their information. And so, I don't believe that the PTOs would be changing much of what they do. So...
Most of their travel and GPs anyway, and they, so they keep track of their documents.
And they share their information with us and we're aware of what they're doing. So, yeah.
Thanks for the question. Okay, so, thank you again for all the work you did on that. 7.9 is to receive notification of any new hires, retirements, and resignations. I didn't see any in the packet or nothing since last meeting. I guess, yeah.
No.
All right.
Julia sent you.
Oh, you're right. Yeah, she sent it to me. Thank you, Susan. So, we just wanted to welcome Polly Griffin, Office Assistant to the Districts, Lam Nguyen, who's a van driver, and Latrain Shea, who's a clerical para. And the people who are leaving us are Sam Muldrem, a para educator, Barbara Padavina, a van driver, and Alice Corey, a para educator. So, thank you all for your service. Yeah, thank you. I'll put that in the packet, too. Okay, 8 is subcommittee and project reports. Want to start us off, Tim?
Sure. It was a really busy week for half the Hingham Education Foundation. They had a very successful and really awesome 1920's party last weekend. It was a lot of fun for everyone who was there. They're meeting tomorrow to, and just the board is meeting tomorrow to evaluate their, all the grant proposals for this year. So, news about that will be coming out shortly after, I imagine. And if people go on their head website, which is hinghameducation.org, there's a new high five. People can pay an amount of money, I think they have different choices for how much you can pay, and send a candy bar and a specific note to any teacher. You can do it as many times as you want. And it's a way to show, for parents and students to be able to show some recognition back for the teachers. So, and make some money. So, that's great for Heff. So, they had a busy week and we'll hear more from them about the grants coming up. There was going to be a special ed, subcommittee meeting this week. We had to cancel it because there was conflicting with too many things. It's been a really busy couple of weeks. Tried to, there was basically impossible to find an hour to have this meeting. So, we're going to do it later on in the month because we were trying to do it before the election with this committee. But since Michelle, Jen, and I are the three committee members on, on it, and we will continue to be on the committee, it doesn't seem to make, be that harmful to meet later in the month. And last but not least, we are doing office hours on Wednesday. I just reminded Michelle that we're doing office hours on Wednesday. So, it'll be Michelle and I, it'll be from 7:30 till 9:00 in the same room at the high school, room 103, that they have been held in up to now. So, hopefully, I will see everyone on Wednesday at 7:30 there. And they're office hours. You can't be there at 7:30. You can show up at some point during the time and we will, we will be there for...
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for amazing that, too. It's great. And I love the high five idea.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
And the, can I, the, the Heff event was fantastic. I was there as well. And I, just a special thank you to Heather Cashman and Dr. Margaret Adams, who attended it as well. It was very generous of you to give your weekend time for, for that. And it was great for Dr. Adams, I think, to meet a lot of people there.
And I'll mention, they don't have an official liaison on school committee, but the Hingham Pride Project had a really fun fundraiser prom on Friday night that a lot of people went to. So, a lot of, a lot of partying last weekend. Good weekend. Yes. We needed them to get through town meeting.
So, you heard my wellness report and saw our negotiations we had earlier. The middle school, school council is meeting May 23rd. So, if anyone wants to take my seat, you're welcome to. And I had some reflections, if you want to hear them now or you want to do the other reports. Okay. So, this is my last meeting. In the past few weeks, I've been reflecting on my nine years here. There was an open seat and I pulled papers four days before the deadline. I had served on a variety of school-related and town government committees. I had three children at each level of the schools. And my parents were role models to me of public service, having both served as elected and appointed officials. I thought I could contribute. And looking back on nine years being a part of Hingham Public Schools, lots was accomplished and we faced many challenges. So, led me to think about what I learned to pass on to my fellow committee members. Here are a few things. For every action, there is a reaction. One must be prepared for responses, whether you make a bold statement or a small comment during a discussion. Someone will remember what you said. Your statement could help them understand or spark something in them to challenge you. I had to listen, try to understand where they were coming from, and refine your position. For all the goals and plans set each year, there will always be something completely unanticipated that happens. That happened every year. Next, democracy is a slow process. It takes time and effort to inform people, get them on your side, and make progress. And next, Hingham can always learn from others. There are many ways to accomplish a task. I have been fortunate to meet school committee members from other towns to share information, and they were in awe of our programs. At other times, I sought their expertise and feedback to provide us guidance and inspiration. Every conversation delivered inspiration and confidence and made me a better school committee member. And last, attend graduation. Our mission is to support students to develop the knowledge and skills necessary for success as local and global citizens. Graduation is the acknowledgement that students achieve these goals and launches them into the world as productive citizens. It is also where you will witness Hingham's diverse student body by seeing young people, hearing names, and meeting families for the first time. Sure, you will hear the names of the stars of the musical, captains of sports teams, and childrens of friends. But they will be a minority of the class. My first in-person graduation ceremony stayed with me all nine years. I thought I knew lots of families in town and had met more during my campaign. But watching all those students receive their diplomas made me realize there were so many more families who call Hingham home. Plus, this was only one grade in the district. These were all the children I was responsible for, and it changed my view of my role. So, my personal journey with Hingham Public Schools is coming to a close with my youngest child graduating next month and the end of my school committee role, which provided the privilege of knowing a little more about how it all gets done than the average Hinghamite. I believe it is the responsibility of all citizens to support every Hingham child to succeed beyond their expectations. You have my commitment that I will continue to advocate for the Hingham Public Schools as a Hingham citizen. And so, a thank you to my girls and my husband for supporting this effort and to everyone here today and along the way for an awesome experience. So, thank you.
That's really well said.
Oh.
Thank you.
Michelle? I have to follow that. It's a worse seed.
I asked.
I know, I should have. Can we do that over again? No, that was really, that was really lovely. I'm going to save mine for the end. I'll jump right into my business. Metco, we had the Metco family meeting on, last Wednesday. Dr. Maestis and I attended. We just had one family member there, but we had a great conversation. The school building, Foster School Building Committee, or, sorry, the School Building Committee that covers Foster and Plymouth River now, had an open house at the Foster School to show the design photos that we had. The architects were there. It was a great meeting. I think about, probably had about 30 people come in. Some faculty was there, some staff, the new principal was there to meet people. People were really excited about the design work and that felt like it was, it was really happening. And folks are very appreciative of the work that the building committee and the school committee has done to keep this project moving forward despite, as you've mentioned, all the challenges of the last decade, right? I mean, it's always something. So, it was, it was nice to hear that. And, and it's exciting now, you know? The pictures are up there and it's good, good stuff happening. So, yeah, I think that's it.
It's tough to follow suit, isn't it? Well, let me give my first report on the Southern Elementary School Council. I attended my last meeting on the 27th. On that same day, I actually had the privilege of attending the fifth grader versus the teacher's hockey game at the high school. It was awesome. I never saw so many people so excited at once.
Gets competitive.
It was, was awesome. And so, I'm grateful for participating in the school council. School council is pretty much where everything takes place besides the PTO and so on. Then, I also want to report on the Climate Action Planning Committee has a continued meeting and doing a fabulous job. A handful of individuals there, very into it, working with a contractor to develop the plan. So, citizens will be, start seeing a survey, asking them for feedback. So, you should be looking out to that. Just to come back to the school council, it wasn't the school council at Foster. And if you don't, may I say a few remarks?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. It was at the school council at Foster that I learned firsthand the conditions at Foster. And I was able to bring back to the school committee, articulate how imperative was for us as a, for school committee, you know, to adopt Foster as our highest priority. And let me tell you, this school committee has not been nothing but very supportive of whatever an individual brings to the table. And I want to thank you, each and every one of you for that. Because, you know, it was through those efforts, working collectively with everyone here, that we were able to prioritize Foster, were able to apply not once, not twice, but three times. And the fact that we united, went to the state house to lobby, not the state legislatures, but the head of MSBA played a major role in us being accepted at the time. So, you know, that is one of the highlights of my six years being here. Another was the fact that essentially, four years ago, I had the privilege of actually him, my youngest son, his diploma, and decided that he'll be graduating from college. So, you know, I will miss serving this committee. You all know that I have served with my heart and passion. You know, it really, when we sit here, we are not here for our kids only. We are here for all the students of Hingham. And we are here for our staff, from the janitor to the superintendent. And I think that is imperative. I have learned so much. As a son of a teacher and a police officer, proud public servant myself, working for the states, for the state for the last 13 years, this involvement with the school committee really, you know, taught me so many different things. But the other highlights that I want to bring, you know, to the attention of everyone is, we agree to disagree on many topics. But we, whenever the community spoke about an issue, we brought forth back here to the school, to the school committee. And we discussed it, we voted on, and many of them was very successful. I mean, one of them is, parents advocated for the change on the GPA, the way we reported. We, we heard them loud and clear, you know, and we made the changes. We issued many resolutions supporting the students, the public schools, supporting our teachers. You know, some of us initiated the conversation about the importance of mitigating money from the developers, you know, considering that the class size would increase. As a result of a member of the school committee bringing that up loud and clear, we were able to get $1 million for PIS and $1 million for the fire truck. That would not have taken place if a member of the school committee had not spoken up. We evolved so many changes with so many principles. Many of us, you know, experienced working with now foster superintendents. I believe that no other school committee members will ever deal with that, and I hope not.
Hope not.
So, and now, you know, we are, you know, moving on with our good friend, John Ferris. I want to wish you all the best. I want to thank the community for voting for me not once, twice, and entrusting me to be here and be your voice. Thank you to my fellow school committee members. I really appreciate being here and having you as a colleague. And thank you for the gifts.
Okay, welcome. Thank you, Carlos. That's really well said. And you should take credit for getting that meeting with, with the head of the MSBA for us.
One individual.
You're the one who set it up.
But remember, I always said that one individual on the school committee doesn't do much. It is a collective effort. But obviously, an initiative, you know, each and every one of us had that... But obviously, an initiative, you know, each and every one of us had that initiative. But it is working collectively that we can actually achieve those goals and, and thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Jen, do you have any updates?
Um, yeah. Just that there's a, we have a policy meeting on Wednesday and I'll be attending the Foster School Council on the 11th and now on six months.
Okay, great.
Good thing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jen. I will just say that I attended the PRS School Council meeting, it's the last one of the year today. They had a poetry palooza this year and they tried to, had each grade level write poems on the theme of belonging. And it's all different kinds of, of poems and they were incredible, just the artwork and the poetry. They originally thought that they would pick one or two or for each grade level and decided, no, they're just going to display it, display them all and, and just honor all of the work that the kids did. It was really, really good. And the PTO meeting for PRS will be on Wednesday, the 11th at 8:30 AM at the school, so I'll be going to that. So I just wanted to notice, as we've all been talking about, that there's an election on Saturday for the school, and there are three school committee seats. And it really is the end of an era. So I'm not going to jinx Ness by saying much, but just to say that she, her work has been invaluable to the committee over this term and I just want to thank her for running again. And then Liza and Carlos, it's, I can't imagine the school committee without you. It's really, it's hard to, it's really hard to imagine. We've all worked together over the past many years and really what's been indisputably the most challenging time to be on a school committee in our lifetimes and not, you know, there's COVID, but, and we additionally had, we're a district in transition and both of those things hit at once, which is really challenging. So I think we've all appreciated it. I know, I know have your tireless dedication, professionalism, collaboration, because not every school committee's been so lucky. So thank you both for that. Carlos, we're going to miss your sense of humor, your willingness to empower others, and your political acumen and skill as you, as we did a lot of these initiatives as you, as you described. Liza, your diligence and your willingness to go deep on issues is second to none, it really is. And also your willingness to mentor new school committee members and pass on your institutional knowledge. We're going to miss working with you and we're going to miss you both personally. And we know you both have exciting things planned for your next chapter, so we wish you the best for that. And I may take a pickleball so I can maybe pick your brain. Sorry, do you mind? I'm sorry. I should have had the roll through.
But I was just thinking, as you made your comments, that for me, Carlos and Liza have been the consistent. You have been here the whole time that I have been here. I, other folks have joined since I joined. And actually, you both served as vice chair for me as well. And you were so supportive and so giving with your time and your talents and your energy. Carlos, you helped me navigate through the, I do sort of politics of town hall, but there are, right? And Liza, you, I remember very vividly you telling me, well, I wanted to say something about an incident that had happened at the schools and I didn't know that if as the chair you could do that. And you said, you have a voice and you have a platform, use it, say it, say what you want to say. So that helped me a lot. It helped me really make some statements and realize that when you get into this seat, the first year is a blur. You just are trying to figure out all that's happening, but you start realizing that you do, sometimes you need to take a stand and say things and do things on behalf of students, your own as well as all the other students in the district. So I want to thank you for everything that you taught me, everything you taught all of us, and your unbelievable commitment to the Hingham Public Schools. Six years is a long time, particularly over the last couple of years and, I mean, almost a decade. I mean, God bless you. And that is amazing. It is a feat that is not oft, I mean, not many people get, on, stay on for three terms. So kudos to you for that as well. And thank you.
Thank you.
We will miss you.
Just one-
And thank you to all the folks who are running.
One final note, you may see this Chromebook somewhere.
It's going to pay for it.
The first person of color elected to public office in Hingham. You may have a little note of the, the first person of color to sit on the, on the seat in, in Hingham. Use this Chromebook one day.
The Hingham Historical Science. All right. Well, thank you all. All right, so anyone have anything under 48 hours? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go for it, Carlos. I was going to say-
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Thank you.